This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the June 21, 2022 Regular Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight?
Yes, I have two additions. First is the addition of the OLCC permit for the Fourth of July, as was mail to you. And then also, under Mayor's report, is Citizen of the Month. I think we actually put that on there.
Okay.
So OLCC is which letter?
New Business A.
Okay.
New Business A, OLCC application from the Inter-Culture Society?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and that's it?
Correct.
Okay, anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda with the one addition of the OLCC in the new business?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
So moved. Is there a second? Thank you, Counselor Ash. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Ash?
Hi.
Counselor Norman?
Nay. Well, the new addition is what I'm nayin' on.
Okay. Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Holber?
Aye.
Counselor Allen is absent tonight?
Correct.
Okay.
Are there any presentations? Okay, Mayor's report.
I guess I get to do the honors. Yeah. This person, his family moved here in 2015. But Wayland here was working here in town in 2011. I think he set up at Cedarside, or Cedar Ridge, not Cedarside, Cedar Ridge.
Actually building Larry's house.
Oh, there you go. So he's been active around town volunteering down at the, well, I call it the Schaumburg. I call it the Rooster Shelter.
Right.
The picnic shelter at Spencer. The last couple of years, it's been helping with the Memorial Day flags. And I think he said he mentioned help at the Senior Center on a gas pipe or something.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the latest is, I just seen on Facebook the other night, didn't get to go down there and see it, but the Doggy Stick Library down at the park. So, yeah, I was wondering who I was gonna pick, and kinda struggled a little bit. And I took wife and I and the grandkids. I'll walk around the skate park, see how the grass is doing. And all of a sudden, I hear this skateboard go, you know, go flying. I hear this boom. And I look over, here's this orange guy sliding across the concrete, you know? I was like, okay, didn't pay a whole lot of attention. And walked around, sat back down, and pretty soon, Wayland walks up. Yeah, that was the guy with the orange shirt. We were talking about the little dings and bangs. And my wife had been mentioning that Wayland's been down at the skate park a lot. And some of that's because he wants to learn to skateboard, I guess, better. But also, with that, I don't know, maybe we should call it the Mother Hen Award, maybe. He's really been overseeing the skate park. He got up from me and said, I gotta go pick up the litter. He makes around, picks up the litter. He's been doing that. And, you know, it's, I was asking myself this other day, for volunteers, what makes the difference between that person that will walk by that litter and the person will stop and pick it up? You know, I don't know if I can, I actually Googled that, and I got all kinds of reasons why it's good for you to volunteer. But I didn't get down to the psychology of what spurs individuals to volunteer and to do these things that fortunately, a big part of the population won't do. And so, my Citizen of the Month is Wayland Eastley. And somebody to take our picture in your mug shot.
Can you answer that question for me?
Yeah, yeah, right. Pride?
Pride.
Yeah.
Right, you're down, and yourself.
Yeah.
All right, cheesy pants. Thanks.
Good job. Way to go, Waylon. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Pleasure. Thank you, Way.
Yeah, no, and I you know, goes beyond himself. He's an example for the kids that are down there. And I heard him once, you know, those kids who should be wearing helmets, they should be
Yeah.
And I think he's getting the message out to some of them, you know? And they see him doing this for them. And they're gonna pick up on that, you know? And hopefully, I mean, you probably have saved us enormous amounts of police time and stuff. You know, nobody else is gonna babysit that part. And he told me about some individuals down there, that he has to give them a little bit of brotherly love, puts his arm around them, gives them some extra attention when they're having a bad day. That's appreciated, too. Maybe not condoned, but appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good choice, Counselor. Okay, are there any Counselor Committee meeting reports, report on?
Not yet.
I have none.
You guys think it out. You can think out.
Yeah.
I'm going to the skate park.
Okay.
Don't get hurt.
Still have the vast people.
Take it easy, Waylon. Nope. Okay. We'll move right into the public hearing, then. This is the time scheduled for a public hearing regarding acceptance of the City of Renone fiscal year 2022-2023, 23 city budget as presented by staff. I will open up this hearing at 7:10 PM. We will now take public testimony. Each person will be allowed five minutes. After everyone has had an opportunity to speak, we will close the public hearing and deliberate. The following are the rules of order. No person shall speak without first being recognized by the Chair and stating his or her full name and residence address. No person shall be disorderly, abusive, or disruptive of the orderly conduct of the hearing. Number three, there shall be no audience demonstrations such as applause, cheering, display signs, or conduct disruptive of the hearing. Such conduct may be grounds for immediate termination of the hearing by the Council. Number four, no person shall present irrelevant material or unduly repetitious oral argument. Five, the mayor, members of the council, and with approval of the Chair, the city attorney and any other officer or employee of the city may question any person who submits oral argument. Six, the council may set time limitations for this proceeding, but in doing so must provide proponents and opponents equal time to present arguments. The time limit shall be set for 30 minutes. We will now take public testimony. In order to use our time effectively, you are requested to not, to repeat testimony or read testimony already submitted in writing. Prior to addressing the council, each person shall come to the podium and state his or her name and address, which will become public record. After everyone has had the opportunity to speak, we will close the public hearing and begin deliberations. Are there any proponents who wish to speak in favor of acceptance, the City of Renone fiscal year 2022-2023 city budget as presented by staff? Okay. Are there any opponents who wish to speak against the acceptance of City of Renone fiscal year 2022-2023 city budget as presented by staff? Okay, is there anyone who is neither for nor against the acceptance of the City of Renone fiscal year 2022-2023 city budget as presented by staff? Nobody wishes to make a comment, so I'll move on to the next one. Is there any rebuttal from the staff? Well, this concludes the public testimony and oral argument portion of this hearing. I will now close the public hearing at 7:13 PM. We will now begin deliberations.
Counselor Webb?
That was my cue.
Yeah. So during the budget meeting, we had some conversations around potential rates and potential effects of what the rates might go up. Some of that was, we didn't have all the information there at the time to really flesh that out, what we were talking to. Also, met with Angie last week. I don't know if she did an update today, but when we looked at the financials for the water fund last week, we were right at target. So everything since that date forward is gonna be gravy and anticipated. So we're, you know, I don't, the data, I can't speak for what the average daily intake is, but that day before was 2,000 bucks came across the counter. So even if we had 1,000 rest at a
In the slow part right now, because the late notices just went out. So this week, we're gonna see a lot of that catching up, so, yeah.
So it's not unforeseeable another 10 grand comes across the counter between now and the end. So we will, we'll be past target, which will help alleviate some of the shortfall that was shown in that rate calculator. So I would, you know, we didn't have a full budget committee that night when that vote went down. Charisse wasn't there. I think we worked long and hard to put in these reserve funds, and there was a lot of thought put behind those. I don't know that getting those is really appropriate. And so I would propose that we put in, in operating reserve in the water fund, fully fund it back to 28,700, and the water facility reserve, fully fund that at 29,000, which will probably result in, we know there's gonna be a rate hike, but that's because budgetarily, we've changed. Because we're adding more staff time in the water. So that's just, that's just part of the game. So that's what I'm proposing. I don't know if you need a motion to that effect. Or we can deliberate that, see where we end up.
I think it's a motion.
Need a motion?
When you guys are ready.
Yeah.
So would you state those numbers again, Dale?
Yeah, well, I'll just go ahead and make the motion that we, we fully fund the operating water reserve fund to 28,700, and the water facility reserve, $29,000. That's what was originally in the budget.
Am I missing, is that not a lower number than what's on here?
I don't think that
What are you talking about?
What's on the sheet here?
What sheet?
The sheet in
So from 33.7 to 20
Just appropriations. That's just what exists. No, it's what's been budgeted to be expended. So those facility, and that is the original, that's the original budget that was proposed and approved by the Budget Committee. Those numbers are, the only numbers on that sheet that will change with this are the actual water fund itself, because that transfer's outnumber is going to increase. So that's an appropriated expense. The reserve funds appropriations are not going to change because we budgeted those amounts for whatever it was that we budgeted those for. So the transfer in will increase, but the, this piece of paper is only the expenses.
Bitches.
And so unappropriated funds are not on here.
Yeah.
Since I wasn't present that night, he briefly explained why they weren't fully funded. What was the reasoning, I guess, at that time?
Well, their reasoning was rate sensitivity. I think in the meeting, we happened to throw out that rates might go up $10. I don't think that was true.
That wasn't the case.
Yeah. And, you know, we were just kinda shooting from the hip, and they grabbed that, wow, that's too much. And so they were just gutting, it's fun, it's water.
So it was planned to come out of reserve instead of being fully funded?
No, it was planned to collect more money in order to follow the council's policy and earmark reserve funds to go into a reserve. They cut what was going to the reserve in an effort to lower what is collected.
Yeah.
Much more sauce.
Okay.
Not following.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that was staff's issue with it, was we were, we presented what followed council's policy. The majority of the citizens on the panel voted to not follow the policy, and so did Counselor Allen that night. So that's why it had a majority and passed to go with.
Do you have a more accurate figure now on what the rate increase would be?
No, because that's what comes out of the Rate Review Committee. We, we don't base the rate, the budget, on what we want the rate to be. We base the rate on what the needed budget to do the work is. So we don't know until June 30, what's in the bank account, because that goes into the calculator. Like, what are we starting with? And then what do we have to collect to meet the mark, basically? Does that make sense, right?
Yeah, we really won't know till the end of the month, when we get the final numbers in.
Yeah.
Right.
The numbers that are in the calculator, which is what I had originally put in there based on the proposed budget, the base rate would go up a little bit over $9, water and sewer combined.
Yeah.
So just water would be $6 on the base. But that's dependent upon, you know, that is with the, where's the, the 41,000 cash carry forward. So for every 10,000 more than that that's carried forward, that's the rough figure is a dollar off the rate. So when I looked at stuff today, I looked at my forecasted expenses, and we're done, I plugged in everything that we're gonna expend for the rest of this month in there. And it looks like we're probably gonna come out just with the expenditures that we're saving based, or get, geez, I'm gonna talk. What we're saving, it's proposed to the forecasted amount is about 10,000. So there's a dollar right there.
Yeah.
So assuming that the revenue comes in a little bit over, we'll probably be able to fund those transfers out fully and not have to bump it up to the sixth increase. It might, you know, it might be what it was with the proposed reduction of those transfers. But we just don't know, you know, you can't promise anything until July 1. And then I'll know what that number really is.
And I know that original forecast, when I looked at it, it was that first number, you'd already updated your books. We gained 20 grand against that, that first calculation already.
Oh, for the carry forward?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And
Today, when I finished putting everything in, though, the way it looked today, we were, we were only 2,000 above the forecast on
2,000 above forecast?
Yeah.
Did you?
On the cash carry. Oh, I did not. Yeah, hold it out. That's the thing, I gotta wait. I gotta wait until, it's not, it's not gonna be a true number until when we have the meeting, and I'm gonna have to bust it to get all those deposits put in there, because I can't get, I can't pull that report until after July 1 to capture the June 30 payments.
I just, I think preliminarily, I think it looked bad, but I think it's looking quite a bit better than where we were. And I mean, worst case scenario, I mean, we were, we ate up 20,000 of contingency, and we added 20,000 more expenditures into this new budget. So I mean, you're looking four or five bucks to cover that. So hopefully, that's where it lands somewhere in there. And I think that's, you know, I don't think that's a drastic change. I mean, we've given, we've given back over the years, several amounts. More on sewer than $20. Yeah.
Over the whole bill, yeah.
Yeah. And that labor cost that's shifting to water is coming from sewer. So sewer's dropping a little. And, you know, I mean, we only have X amount of employees, it's just shifting them. Anyway, that's my motion.
And so you genuinely feel that the main reason, the largest reason of dissent from the citizens on the committee was because they expected the rate change would be worse than it will be?
That they didn't really want one at all.
At all.
And so when the $10 ballpark number came out, they were looking for a way to keep it down, I think.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, hey, handed to them for trying to keep the rate low. It's not as realistic with what we know, how we know it comes and goes, but
And there was some confusion there about the, the waiting till the end of June. And to see the real number.
Yeah. Yeah, because we don't, we've never done that before. We usually have the rate review before the end of the year, so. Yeah.
We're getting smarter.
I know. Well, and that's the interesting thing, is just every year, we
Yeah.
It was kind of a bummer to fight for the reserves, because we had worked so hard to like, figure out what was legitimate to set aside and what wasn't taking too much from the customer. And then to have the members of the committee kind of backtrack on what we all worked on for five years and kind of came to agreement on, we were just like, what? What are we doing?
Yeah, and I I don't want, you know.
Personal interest versus some interest.
Right. Well, but the same players were on the committee when we were going through all that, when we decided to count the cash carry forward, to not be double dipping, when we decided to set aside reserves and start being like a real city that has money if something happens.
Yeah.
Come on.
Okay, a motion was made?
One question. Does he else, do you guys also need to mention what the number will be, the 500? They adopt with the aforementioned changes, right?
Well, so he's making a motion to change that. And then he'll make a motion to approve the amendment.
Yeah. My question is, do you need to tell us what the original consumption fee number would be? Action fee number? The number that was actually, they cut it, so we're gonna, right? Oh, I see what you're saying. Does that matter? That's my question. I don't think, I don't know that you have to call all the figures out. You just, we discussed what they are. Okay. The, the new consumption figure is gonna be
So he's increasing it by 28,700.
Yeah.
Facility reserves are increasing by 29,000. They're gonna approve that. And then when they approve the budget with the amendment, we'll have Angie list what the water fund total number is.
Okay.
Because that's where the actual change is in adopting the budget.
It just goes back to the
For the resolution.
Original proposed number. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And do we, then that 7 million number, does that change, too?
No, no, because it's all the same numbers. They just played the shell game with the money. Well, no, because we're collecting more.
It's more revenue.
Oh, they just shell gamed it and didn't collect. Yeah, we weren't collecting it.
Full amount would be
Want it just to go back to the original budget, then? Yeah. It'll go back to what was I think he's, he's talking about on the, on the resolution, it states the total budget amount.
So you take that total amount and add it, those two numbers together.
Well, it's not the numbers I said, because here, we're already doing like 6,000 of, I'm just saying, we bring them back to what we originally proposed in the budget. We'll have to do some math.
Keep doing math.
We gotta lay it in those math.
There'd be at least three calculators on that.
There's a little chance.
It's a $45,000 difference.
Yeah, basically, put the $45,000 back. Yeah.
So it'll be leaving the seven, I'll be the number two.
He's gonna do this, so plus.
You have it in front of you now, you might as well look at it.
I can't. There it is. You have it in front of you, so I'm just gonna let you read it to me. I concur.
Say that again?
64.
And
But that doesn't change our tax thing, because that's
That's, yeah, that's a set.
Okay, so let's get through this first motion first. So the motion on the table is to increase the operate, transfer out from water fund to the operating reserve fund to 28,700, and transfer out to the water facility reserve fund to 29,000. Motion was made by Dale, and we have a second?
I have.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Norman. Call the roll, please, Stephanie.
Mayor Holber?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Webb? I'm concurred.
So we're moving right into the resolution?
Yes. Yeah, that's someone, whoever makes the motion, add them
Yeah.
Add the amendment.
Or just with noted changes, right?
Okay.
This is all in.
Does everyone understand that, what we're doing?
All right. So I'll make a motion without resolution, number 22-10. And amended by the previous motion.
For the total budget amount of
For the total, amount of 7,418,464.
Correct.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Holber?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm concurred.
Good work, good work. Okay, are there any topics on the floor tonight?
We do, have one.
Oh, wonderful.
Can you wait for that?
Victoria Coleman, would you come forward at the podium, Victoria, and state your name and address for the record, please?
992 Second Avenue. So my first thing is, I was wondering what the procedure is for if there's a non-emergency call made, and you wait days and never hear any if there's a non-emergency call made and you wait days and never hear anything from either our police department or the county, which I know they're working up here too at times. And it was a restraining order issue and nothing was done, I didn't hear anything for four days until the person was finally arrested Saturday and then I got a call. So I know we are, you know, don't have a lot of money, our police force is working in limited hours, but to me, that was a concern because it's a restraining order issue and involved my children. So I guess, I told the common, bring it to you guys, so. What we can do to maybe have better response time or if the county's gonna be getting money from us to be involved in our city, then they should be responding if our guys aren't on duty. So.
Who was on during the time frame?
I don't know when you're.
The incident was Wednesday morning and I did not hear from anybody until Saturday evening.
And who did you hear from?
Dave Brown.
Okay. So unfortunately, that has happened on a few non-emergency calls. Where Chief and Carnahan and I are scheduled to meet with Pixley, Chief setting it up because it does look bad, it does cause strife in the citizens' minds when we, our police assume, okay, we're off, the county's covering us, and if the county's not even calling back people, that is unacceptable. So, yeah.
Not only that, when I called dispatch, all I got was hello. And the, when the restraining order was broken at my home, I was not home at the time, my children were kids were being picked up and they were harassed by the person that restraining orders against. So the driver of the bus for that route had pulled up, was pulling up and then the children got on the bus and told her what happened. So she called dispatch after me and she had the same experience. And the dispatcher told her that I mentioned it within my report of calling. And I said, well, the driver is the one that saw that, she'll be calling after me. Well, that's already been reported, you don't need to call us. That was what they told her. So it's not just the.
Yikes, sounds like dispatch needs some help, that is not good.
Aren't those, are those phone calls? Are those phone calls recorded?
Oh, it does, yes.
So that might be something.
Yeah.
We want to have a review on.
Well, yeah, the commissioners need to know that's the service their citizens in the county are getting from dispatch. Which is, should be Columbia County Dispatch. You know, what's your problem, what's the issue? Right? Some statement like that that draws it out.
Right.
I mean, you know, what's going on, what's the issue you're having, I don't know, there's some sure stock wording you're supposed to say.
Yeah.
Ridiculous, but they would just say hello, because what if it was a little kid?
Yeah.
That was trying to, yeah. Embarrassing.
I just want to make sure that.
Yes.
Thank you so much for coming forward, especially in this setting, so we can get it on public record.
I respect for, at least my grandpa was a police officer, so I know they work really hard, but we don't want people falling through the cracks.
No, and thank goodness it was, ended the way it did and wasn't kind of an imminent threat thing.
Kind of, sorry for what you went through, of course, but thanks for kind of being a neighborhood watch for us too. So appreciate it.
I have a second issue. The other one is the rabbit population. Can anything be done? Because I put in a garden, I buy flowers and they're going through it, so all my money basically gone, I can't feed my family, my garden won't grow because they're eating it all. And my girl was gonna come with me, but she gets off on getting coaching, so. I didn't know if that's something that the city can help with.
I don't know how the city would help, the messed up part is, there's half the people that don't have gardens that love them. And then there's, we get the half that call and go, what are you guys gonna do about this rabbit? Unfortunately.
It's just gonna keep it.
Yes, someone just dropped off pets and over the course of the last five years, they've just boomed into a. I can talk to Roger and see if they've ever experienced animal control and just see have they ever thinned out a population even just by trapping them and relocating them somewhere?
There are residents doing that, I won't name names.
Okay, rehoming them or something?
Dispatching.
Dispatching them?
Mm-hmm.
But also, can, can you sense rabbits?
They dig.
Yeah, like out, they dig in.
They'll dig under.
They burrow for their.
Yeah. They're, they're, yeah, I used to have rabbits at my house and they're horrible. Yeah, so I mean, I can call Roger and see if there's some program by which he could help us or assist us, or if there's a
Be nice if you relocated, I like them.
Well, and maybe rehome the, the bunnies of Corey Hill. I've some program because there was like four of them, I came down from the cemetery and they're, they're just sitting on the side of the road nibbling and I was like, okay.
Quickly becomes hundreds.
Yes.
Because our neighbors sue out. And there was easily a hundred after two years, it was insane.
Yikes.
There is no more.
Calling Roger.
In my yard.
Let you know, if something comes up, I'll let you know.
I know, I think it was Cannon Beach or one of the beach cities had a huge issue with it, so that.
Oh, maybe called.
I can ask.
Civic cities to have a big rabbit population.
Last I heard, Cannon Beach couldn't because people stepped in about the removal of them. I can check with one person.
But, I mean, there might be a program where homeowners could trap them and then someone will come and take them away. It, once they get on your property, get them and then someone, you know, there's gotta be some program like that where people have the right to use their property how they want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I go to work extremely early and there's times I see like eight rabbits just on Second Avenue from the hill into the bridge, so.
Yikes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bring my dog up.
I was gonna say. I have a friend who's a falconer.
That's what I was gonna say, could we bring a couple in?
He does commercial falconry to disperse things.
Yeah.
They seem to come and go because somebody dumped a bunch at the lake, you've seen them.
Yeah.
They were thick at the lake and then they just all disappeared.
Yeah, and I think wintertime and bigger predators, I think it does thin them out, but up here, the predators aren't going in that neighborhood and so they're kind of they're hiding out in there. Dude.
Wintering under houses.
Raining foundations.
Yeah.
Takes about five minutes for two rabbits to turn into 50.
Okay.
Rabbits. Okay.
Set agenda for acceptance, library board meeting minutes for April 2022. Can be found on page three through five. I was at that meeting too.
Yeah.
Any questions, discussions on library meeting?
I'm good.
If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the library meeting minutes for April?
Minutes for April 6, 2022.
Your second.
Well, second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Webb, would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Hi.
Hi.
Councilor Norman?
Hi.
Mayor Holber?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you. To set agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for May 2, 2022. Six through eight.
All right, that should say June 6. Not from May 2.
Yeah, June.
Yeah, sorry, which are the ones that are in your packet.
Okay. Scratch, May 2.
I was like, dang, that was a long time ago.
Yeah.
I was slacking, nope.
Okay, any discussion or questions for that June 6 meeting? Anyone like to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for June 6?
I'll make a motion to accept the city council meeting minutes from June 6, 2022.
So moved by Councilor Ash, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Norman, would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Councilwoman Webb?
Hi.
Councilor Norman?
Hi.
Mayor Holber?
Hi.
Councilor Ash?
Hi.
Okay, any unfinished business tonight? Moving right into new business. A, letter A, OLCC application for the intercultural society for, I believe, July 4, 2022.
So that's what's missing is they didn't do a drawing.
Oh, there was one, I'm sorry. They just circled the whole area. Right, it should have been printed with it, but it didn't.
Oh, I have it in my pocket.
What? Oh, it was a.
Need a copy of it?
Yes. Thank you.
So this is still contingent on if they approve it, OLCC?
Um, yeah, they can even apply to OLCC without council approving it.
Yeah. I think they're gonna put, I think they're gonna push back on that area. I think OLCC is gonna say, no, it's gotta be a tight area. There's, what Stephanie's saying is the map they included was the, all of the event area for the grandstands.
Yep.
The football field.
So the whole event, basically, anyone in an event. A restricted area.
Yeah. I've never seen OLCC give that without a perimeter fencing, checking that they're 21, all of that. Because there's a lot that could just be like, here. Right?
How did they do it in the past years?
They've never done alcohol down there. You've had beer gardens at Hawkins Parks, which had to have perimeter fencing, the downtown bars, which have to have perimeter fencing. You, you have to.
So we did one, there was a distillery.
Yeah, he had, he had his own like space, he had the pins that were his perimetered area.
At the American Legion?
Um, they did also perimeter theirs.
Right.
The, we're talking about the whiskey distiller that was at Jamboree on Adams, he was kind of set back off of Adams in that park area. And he had his little pop-up tent and then the perimeter for people over 21 to come try his stuff.
So.
So that's what worries me, even if we approve, okay, they can have it, I think they're gonna get kicked out because of the not actually having a serviceable area where they can maintain it.
So if we approve for the whole area and OLCC says no too much and then they redraw, can they go straight to OLCC? Because we already approved more than that, or would they come back to us and at that point it's too late?
Um, I believe they, if we approve it with the whole area and OLCC wants them to make a further restriction, they can just go directly back to OLCC.
Why don't they need insurance? Is that normal?
Where do you see?
Yeah.
On the second page, number 12?
They may not available.
Applicable, yeah. I would think that.
So if I remember right, just.
Insurance?
There's some note about.
Because they're lower below the 300.
Oh, they're below.
Yeah.
Wait, I kind of question, but.
They're not that far below.
No. And I would, and I'm not trying to be anti this because I think, why not, who cares, adults can do what they want. My concern is, I think these guys have taken that to areas where everything going on in the whole venue has to do with alcohol. So they didn't need a smaller perimeter spot, right? They were at a wine thing or a, the different brew masters thing, they weren't. It'd be interesting to see if they've ever been in the middle of a town without a perimeter. I would think not, but maybe they have.
No perimeter.
I mean, they have one, but I don't know that they're gonna put fencing up all the way around it to stop.
Much to prevent them from buying it and then taking it clear over.
And then suing the city.
Nothing.
Hit to a minor.
Yeah, and suing the city because they don't have insurance.
That's the, I wish she would have. Yeah.
Can we? Can we make stipulations when approving? I mean, if the OLCC is saying they don't have to have insurance, can we require it?
Well, I mean, the risky part is first, who's insurance it's gonna hit is intercultural societies and they're probably not even thinking that. But they're gonna, they have event insurance and they will be fully.
Bible.
First. Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't risk salmon festivals insurance for someone that was gonna be perimetered, but I think if we, what's weird, no one's here tonight to speak to it, did they just?
She probably thinks it's a slam dunk.
Yeah, yikes.
Well, generally, they need two to four weeks for OLCC approval. And we're looking at or getting down to the
Yeah.
Only about two weeks.
Yeah, I don't think they put us in a good spot because if we turn it down, they're not, there's no way for them to fix it in time.
Right.
It's not fair.
Can we attach anything with the application that requiring a fencing, that, that asking the.
Not really, because it's a signature on the OLCC's thing. It's their form, but that's what gets submitted. As soon as chief's signature goes on there.
It's like.
Only permit chief to sign it if they am in this.
I can.
Yeah, you could do that.
What was that?
They said, yes, we could say we, we are like approving for chief to sign it with these additional changes.
So if they change the application.
Then we have.
If they make a small perimeter footprint within the larger footprint.
And insurance.
Yeah. It's weird they don't have insurance, that's crazy.
Well.
That's crazy because their own employees.
They checked yes, and so they needed to submit a drawing.
Yeah, they did.
They just did a print.
You have the original?
It's on the, what?
You have the original, can you grab it?
No. It's around the grandstands, all the way behind the baseball field, it's the entire area.
They just put a circle on Google Maps.
Obviously, yes.
And I had mentioned to her, when I talked to her about what she would have to do to apply, I said, you'll have to draw a map of where you're gonna be allowing the serving and consuming to take place. She was like, okay, yeah, yeah. I meant like a few picnic tables in an area, not, you know. That's typical.
Nice too, she was here, so we could say, like, are you planning to limit this? And you just have them fill out the application broad or, you know, what the intent there is? Yes, would have been nice.
Well, I have two strikes on this application. One is coming in so late. And two, not, like you say, they're not a small perimeter with a fencing that they're allowing because they're trying to allow the whole park to have it. That's my thought.
Yeah, we've, and we've never done that. Not with alcohol. Just because you get some teenager that.
Is this a distillery again, it's hard?
I think it's a, a beer.
Cap truck, so it's gonna be an after first. Campbell's on it, basically.
Yeah, but it's.
So people could be talking.
Sounds like a person who makes beer, Ryan Stafford. German, right?
But you think OLCC will narrow it down?
I don't, I think they'll just kick it out, but because basically whatever insurance you have on your business, when you do a perimeter site like Miranda did for Cedar Side at the logging show, that her insurance. that, her insurance covered that additionally premises, the additional premises, that is under her OLCC license. So, that's why you have to have servers, you have to be checking age, you have to be not over 30, so. It's a little, but maybe theirs is different, because maybe they just travel and they have no actual brick and mortar site, I don't know. But I've never...
Somebody surely has to be checking ID.
I mean, I could call Stacy and see if she can bomb in here to answer your questions, or...
Well...
I mean, I like the idea of it overall, I'm reluctant to say no, it's just, yeah, it's not small issues.
And even if they, I mean, assuming they are following the rules and checking ID and all that, there's no, there's no control
Right.
how far out that all that alcohol's gonna travel. So yeah, there is no...
It's not like a beer garden.
It's not controlled, it's not a controlled area, so you...
I'm not, I'm not in favor of it. I would be afraid.
In, they show their ID, they come inside, there's somebody at the gate, it's not, yeah, you can't leave with your beer in your hand.
It's gonna be all over.
It's gonna be like Vegas, basically.
I would say, I would only be comfortable adding, approving it if we said we're adding a stipulation that the the area needs to be predetermined and not to exceed, I don't know, like 25% of the full event space and have a perimeter. I think, you know, something like that.
I mean, we, I could call Matt, he could tell us what his plan is, too.
Yeah, I mean, we're making some assumptions here.
Be added to the...
No, I know, but I mean, we, we could say...
So we gotta make a decision.
So what would you like to do, call the guy?
I, yeah, I wouldn't mind calling him.
Okay.
This is right now, yeah.
See if...
Hey, dude.
Says if we're gonna walk away if a beer enters the crowd, we can make a decision on that.
Right.
Well, I think if it's, if they circle, it's gonna have more than 301 people.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, that's another strike.
Two.
Please call Ivy now.
I guess you call Stacy and Stephanie, it's gonna be 252 people.
It has to be under 300 for insurance.
Bring it.
Yeah, there's no way. Not like beyond the house.
Hi, is this Matt? Hi, Matt, this is Josette Mitchell, and I am the city administrator for the city of Vernonia. And I'm good, I'm in my council meeting right now with the city council, and they're talking about your request for the OLCC temporary sales license. And they have some questions. Can I put you on speaker? Okay, one minute.
Oh, yeah. City Council, other, for the July, other.
Okay, one second. What's doing that? Oh, counsel's on him, damn it. Sorry, everybody. I dumbed old phone, need to upgrade. I know, I probably need, it's probably because I didn't upgrade, here, I'm putting on speaker right away. Sorry, I hung up on you, Matt. Okay, so the council, the mayor's gonna start, and then they'll ask you some questions.
Oh, yeah, don't worry, it's good.
Hi, Matt, Mayor Holbar here.
How are you doing today?
Good, we're just reviewing the Intercultural Society's application for you're vending alcohol on July 4th from
Yes.
5:30 to 9:30 down at the Spencer Park. And one of the big, biggest questions that, that faced us, Matt, was the, the size of the perimeter of, of people purchasing alcohol and then floating around the grandstands and the ball field, and it's quite an area, and we kinda looked at, that could be problematic.
Okay.
So, is there, on this application, is there a more defined ribbon off area, if you will, for alcohol consumption?
Well, I will say that we are not a part of the event planning team for this event, we were asked by the planner, her name was Stacy.
Sure.
And she asked us to come and pour alcohol, so we were not part of that planning, a part as far as the, the area that needed to be roped off for this event. But if it's something that is a concern of you, we can definitely, probably meet up and we can speak with her and we can make sure that we have, like, an area that's just an alcohol area that will be roped off and will be monitored 100% by, either, I don't know, we could, I don't, like, well, well, obviously, my fiancee here and I are both OLCC certified, so we won't, we'll only be carding people that are over 21 and making sure that that's a thing, so.
Sure.
But as far as the boundaries go for the area where alcohol is consumed, that is not something that we have been privy to prior, so.
Okay.
They typically have, when they, someone ask them that question, when they go to places?
Is that a, a question that's, you know, on your other setup venues in other places, is that question asked of you?
Uh, well, generally, we've done, this is kind of a unique event for us. We generally do like weddings and private parties where the alcohol consumption is, like, limited to a specific space. And so, this is a different spot for us that we've, that we haven't really been in before, so, but we're, we're trying to kinda branch out, because we're a newer company as well, so we're trying to just get our, our name out there. So this isn't something that we've really come across yet, so, but if there's something that needs to happen, we can definitely make that happen, and we can work with Stacy and the other planners to make sure that there is a roped off area that is just for alcohol consumption.
Okay, Matt, well, we'll go ahead and pass on those concerns to the Intercultural Society and Stacy. And, and then she could contact you then, I guess.
Just let us know what we need to do, if we need to work with them and make sure that happens, we, we really would love to be a part of this, this event and be there, so.
Yeah, so we'll accommodate any way we need to, yeah.
Okay, sounds good, appreciate your time tonight.
Yeah, so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, bye.
Yeah, I would suggest what I said earlier, that we work a stipulation for our approval, so it can't just be like, we approve this, but talk to Stacy and then doesn't happen. I would, I would be more comfortable saying, whether it's a percentage of the space, or square footage, or just to say a lesser area that's separately roped off with someone, like, carding at the entrance, I guess.
Do we know right where the truck's gonna sit?
He doesn't seem to know where.
He wasn't sitting in there. Did we call Stacy?
Might want to.
Yeah, I would recommend that.
We're going above and beyond for you.
Yeah, I can't say we're not trying to work with them.
Rather than put up fencing, maybe use ribbon or something.
Well, the construction fencing's pretty easy.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, we have that.
Oh, yeah.
Hi, Stacy, it's Josette.
Hey there.
Hi, so I'm in the council meeting, and we're discussing the OLCC permit, and council has some questions. Are you gonna be on speaker?
That's fine. Sorry if I have a little noise, I'm out here at a campfire with my children. I'm trying to answer.
Hi, Stacy, Mayor Holbar here.
Hi there.
Yeah, we're reviewing the application, and one of the, the largest concerns we had, Stacy, was the, the size of the area into the alcohol vendors, or purchasers, if you will.
Okay.
And we're just, we've never hosted that in Spencer Park with alcohol before, I believe.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And it's the general consensus of the council that the the map that you drew and designated areas is just too large for us. And we just talked to the vendor, Matt, and he's willing to work with us on that, and you, as well.
Like creating a beer garden kind of thing?
Exactly, and a more restricted area just for alcohol, and and they are both certified and OLCC members, and they're planning on doing, checking ID and everything like that, so.
Do you have an idea of what you're thinking, so, so originally, I guess I can kinda give you an idea of where we were thinking of having him park his vehicle. We were planning on having him, if you're looking at the backside, like, from the skate park side, we were thinking of having him plus the food people on the right side, and the kid area completely separate on the left side. That's kind of the idea, that way, the kid play area would completely be, like, on the far left of the grandstands, and then he'd be on the right. What are your thoughts?
So, they would not be out in the football field, they'll be in the
Between the track and Rock Creek?
So I was, when I, when I chose the whole, like, park spot, I thought that they needed me to find, tell where the event was gonna take place. So he and his, so what we're thinking of doing is parking them just on the outer rim of the grandstands and that track. And so they would be separate, so if we had to have a beer garden or something like that, we could designate that it be on the outer rim of the right side of that track, and then it would be completely separate from, say, kids, say, where the music's playing in front. And so we could do something like that, and he could put some tape or something in an area like that with some seats.
Yeah, that, that would, sounds more reasonable to us, I believe.
Okay, it'd be pretty easy to do, too, because we can just, like I said, get some of that, the yellow caution tape and, or whatever this area is, and, and he can put it around a perimeter there that would be exclusively for the adults who are getting beverages.
Sounds like a plan, yep.
Okay, do I, and this is just a question for you, and maybe I don't know the answer, nor do you, but do we, do I need to redraw the coordinates area of where that portion will be for the OLCC application?
Yeah, so Stacy, they're specifically looking for, where is your new service area? That's licensed.
I understand, okay, so then, is that something you guys can circle on that map as that area approved that we just spoke about?
I, I would think we would rather have you just come in tomorrow morning and, and put it on there.
Sure, I can do that.
Okay, cause I don't wanna guess what you're thinking.
What was that?
I don't wanna guess which area you're thinking.
Oh, I see, okay, yes, yes, I could do that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I appreciate you guys calling me with your question.
Okay, thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, take care, have a good evening.
You too, as well.
Bye.
Okay.
So I think if you, if you do it how Cherie said, and the 25%, it could take up that whole grass area where the where the campers camp behind, off, between the track and that, and that'd be 25% or less, right? I mean, I think a quarter of the area, yeah.
Yeah.
Plenty.
To say something, so they aren't like, here, we're gonna put a perimeter, and it's still the whole event.
Right. Right?
Okay.
So then a motion to approve with whatever the stipulations are.
He and his fiancee sound very accommodating to anything. They didn't know, that would be the situation. So I would make a motion that we approve the temporary sales license for the OLCC for Tap Truck Portland for the 4th of July Great American Bash Celebration with the stipulation that the application will be amended to show a mapped area of no more than 25% of the event space that will be roped off in some way exclusively for alcohol consumption.
Very good. Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Councilor Webb, second, would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Holbar?
Aye.
Councilor Ash? Motion carries.
Go, good work. Nothing's easy. Okay, any business from the departments tonight? Ordinances and resolutions, resolution 2022-11. A resolution establishing the Holtz Family Skate Park and setting rules and regulations, page 9 through 10.
Resolution, I'll give you the summary, just put together, in two parts, first, it's officially designating the skate park, skate park for the city's insurance, and then also it's adopting the rules. So it's more of formality.
An afterthought.
But it makes our insurance company happy.
Yeah.
This is how we get recreational immunity. Yeah, this is recreational immunity.
Yeah. Okay.
Any questions?
Anyone like to make a motion to
Yep.
Pass resolution 2022-11?
I'll make a motion that we pass resolution number 2022-11. Then, a resolution setting rules and regulations for city-owned skate parks and designating a portion of Spencer Park as Holtz Family Skate Park.
So a move by Councilor Ash, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Webb, you call the roll, please, Steph?
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Mayor Holbar?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
One more resolution tonight, 2022-12, resolution adopting a new master fee schedule.
This is the first of two resolutions adopting a master fee schedule, you'll have another one in July for the new utility rate. But in the meantime, we'll wanna get these on the books, so that we can charge these first of July 1st. I left them in red for you guys, so that you could see for previous calculations. The only thing that was taken out was the VCLC, these have the VCLC to rent out, so took that out, someday if that ever becomes a thing again, we can re-adopt those, but it's just kind of some housekeeping. Summary. Don't we just roll down real quick? Or do you have questions specifically?
Roll down the ones.
Okay. Call me if you wanna change anything. So the water connection was increased to $2,500, did you increase the cost for creating said connections?
What was it before, Steph?
2021.
2,300.
2,100? About four.
And then, so that's due to increase in materials. And then we also increased the hourly rates for staff, because the previous numbers were old and the fully loaded rate. Also increased the planning services hourly rate, that is a direct pass down of what we are charged fully loaded. And then, we also added a building permit processing fee of $35, this will be on all new building permits, this is to cover our costs in-house of processing all of those, we only get 25%.
25% of the fees.
Of fees, and it just doesn't cover our time, we're doing a lot more work in that, and it's not really fair for the taxpayers to pay for the individual processing of people's permits, so. We're also taking more active role in management of the building department per the state's new mandate, and so this kinda helps offset some of those costs. We also increased the new home building permit application deposit by $200 based off of a review of the last year or two of building permits, it just isn't covering the costs, and so rather than having to invoice them at the end and trying to collect those fees, we're taking it on the front end, so that's, it's just cleaner for us, and it assures that we are getting paid. paid for all that staff time and call station time even if they don't decide to inform with the project, because either way, we are expending those funds. So that's an increase there. We also added, let's see, we increased the right-of-way permit fee to $1,000. This is specifically for when they, the right-of-way deposit. This is specifically for when they're building a new road. There are a lot of hours spent on designing and assuring that it is done correctly. This does not cover it. It's just a start. So what our process has been is that we collected, it was $200, not enough, fee upfront, and then we would track the expenses over time and invoice as we go. Well, this is to help avoid having large balances and having to try and collect on the end. This will help us make sure that that portion of our fund is being replenished as our expenses happen. So this is, this is specific, this is not for when you're building a house and you have a right-of-way permit. It doesn't work for you doing the right-of-way. This is for when you are building a right-of-way. So it takes a lot of time for our engineer to ensure that that's all done correctly. And this will also be, what we're going to do is, as those deposits run out, require another one, so that there's never large balances that we're trying to collect on the back end when people decide not to inform a project. That way, we are being replenished. And again, the taxpayers aren't having to pay for credit developers. The accessory building or use. I don't remember what that was before. Can't remember that one. It must have been either zero or 50 or.
That's the permit to build an accessory building?
It's for us to process. It has to go to planning. It has to be reviewed or to that. This is in addition to the building permit fee. So this pays for planning time. That must be, it's equal to the hourly rate of planner, so one hour of planning time. Thanks for that.
So. My question would be on that, is what do you classify an accessory building?
If you're building a shop, it has to be, sorry, has to be reviewed by our planner to make sure that there's no setbacks, additional information, sorry, variance, or you need to change this or change that. That's an hour.
Okay.
Yeah. Not an accessory dwelling unit. It's not an ADU.
No. An ADU is a new house.
Yes.
This is just an accessory structure.
We still have a downtown zone in lieu of parking fee?
Yeah, that's what we, that's what we developed instead of, because we found the old ordinance on the books or. Yeah, that's what they pay when they have a change of use and they need it required.
For anybody who's not on the highway.
Yeah.
Everybody who's on side streets.
Yeah.
Ordinance 886, I'll never forget it.
It was his aha moment.
We guys mentioned title change.
An after me.
Yeah.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any other questions or suggestions on the master fee schedule?
I think we've had some discussion previously on this, some of the changes that have been here.
Costs are going up.
Crazy.
Fortunately, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2022-12, the resolution providing for the adoption of a new and revised master fee schedule and rescinding Resolution 2022, is that right, 12?
No, I'm sorry.
2021-12?
2021-16.
Oh my goodness.
2021-16?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, it's correct in the body, not the title.
Oh yeah, I see it down below.
I will second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Do you call a roll, please, Steph?
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Mayor Holbert.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. I have some correspondence. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with, and I got a call from the, her name's Sierra Trash. She's on the Columbia County Economical Team, and she is a small business coordinator for Columbia County, and also Jason Moon, who's the director of the Small Business Development Center, which we just, I guess, gave some funds to recently or last year. But anyway, they're going to come out to Brunnonia tomorrow, and I'm going to meet with them and, and about 1:00, and they're interested in our small business downtown quarter, which we have, I'm very proud of. And also, down at the lake, David Sterner and Richard Trevor are having a grand opening for their business down there and a ribbon cutting. I'm going to take a part in at 2:00 tomorrow, so I thought we'd, I'd accompany Sierra and Jason down there to witness that too, so that'll be fun, so. Y'all can make it. I don't know. We'd have to, we'd have to announce we'd.
It's kind of late now, but I'll just do.
Too late now, okay.
Morning.
Okay.
I won't be there.
You're going fishing. Okay. Any other correspondence? City Minister report.
Okay, so the transfer switch startup was scheduled for the 13th. We went over there. We started the generator. There are a few missing connections to the transfer switch via the electrician. So got on the phone with him and they're figuring it out. It's something he had never worked on before, so he wanted the generator guy's advice, and they never connected, and no one ever told me they never connected. Anyways, the generator runs. We will do the test once they finish the connections, but it sounded great. Everything looked on it great. The technician showed John Warner, who's one of the senior board guys, and I all the bells and whistles, so. And then we talked about, once we get that all hooked up and going, about caging that line that comes out that's kind of hanging there precariously, where some kid could just love to jump on it and break the gas line. So we discussed that too. Dawn Rose, still mid-June, we're past mid-June. I have no update on those polls from Platte, so fingers crossed, knock on wood, they come in soon. I did get a call from Katie at ODF. Her new replacement wants to schedule a visit within the next two weeks. They couldn't give me more information than that because it's the person training him and him that would like to come visit Brunnonia, look at the trees, whatever. So once I have more information about what date they're proposing, then I'll send you guys all the invite, and Stephanie's going to notice it in case a majority of council is able to attend. And I still haven't gotten down to Dana to talk to him about the All Bark Dust, or ditch, or whatever we would, that would become, the Dirt Planter, the whole block long. I haven't talked to him about that yet, because he's really a majority owner in that, and if he's really for that, then I'll go to Sharon, who's not in town, but get ahold of Sharon and ask her, because it was that block that was really interested. Yeah, that whole, they're all in the one block there, one side. So I'll let you know when I get the information from Katie. We're still waiting on the planning grant. The grants are awarded July to August. Usually, it's just before jamboree, but sometimes it's after, so hopefully, fingers crossed, we get that one. We still need to finish the water line at the dog park, although the stick library has gone in and it works, looks great. The ODOT crosswalk, so I did receive a callback to my email and a different connection, and he's the one I will be working with to investigate whether a crosswalk at the skate park will be allowed. So he's, we were planning on calling, talking to each other tomorrow at 10:00 to kind of go over and be on a Zoom and show him what I'm talking about and point to it, so he doesn't have to come all the way here from Astoria in the first preliminary meeting. And I'll bring you more information when I have it on that. I did contact County Roads about the intersection for Stony Point and Keysee. The danger there, everyone was talking about with the construction, people taking the seven-mile loop, and they're kind of bombing out onto Keysee, and people aren't seeing it. So she, I talked to the, one of the assistants at Columbia County Roads, and she was sending it up to Mike. Mike Russell's the head of Columbia County Roads. And I, we went on a map together, and I said, this is where they're coming out, and these people are coming too fast, and so they're going to propose a dangerous cross traffic at Stony Point stop, and then one on each way saying intersection ahead, just so people come up that curve, kind of our notice that, hey, there's someone could be pulling out. And then I need to know, which two of you, did you guys pick to represent council for the rate review? Or did you ever? And if you didn't, could you please pick it? So I can, we're, we're thinking, we don't know when it will be. It could be evenings, depending. The Public Works Committee is Sam and Sheila. Sam's an out-of-town worker, so it'll probably be an evening meeting, if that helps whittle it down.
One single meeting?
Two, one meeting, two members of council, and then there's two of Public Works and then staff. So it's, it needs to be, the availability of these people needs to be, so it needs to be Thursday or Friday, because, or Monday, Wednesday. And then, within the next two weeks.
Sam, you won't have numbers until the 1st, though, right?
Won't have numbers until after we come back from the holiday.
Yeah.
Oh, so we have to do it on the 5th, but how can we do it on the 5th and then do it at that meeting?
The problem is waiting till the end of the year.
I know, but then, I can make it, I can give you a guess, but yeah, I won't have a real number until I get all the deposits put in after I get the bank statement and.
Thought we said we didn't have to go to the second meeting. We'd have time before the billing.
Well, yeah, we have time. The risk is, anybody that closes out won't be on the new rate. They'll be on the old rate, if that matters.
Don't we have council on the 5th?
Yeah.
So weren't you just saying having that meeting on the 5th?
Say that again?
I thought you were just talking about having the rate meeting on the 5th.
No, they were saying it would have to be after the 1st, and the next day we're all here is the 5th, but that's the council meeting.
Okay.
I mean, we can risk it. There just will be people that could close out their account and not be on the new rate of any of it in July.
But that's not going to be hundreds of dollars.
No, I don't think it is either.
Yeah, I don't think.
That's the only risk. So you want, so anyways, who are your two members? And we can send things to them to see when they can meet after the 5th.
So when are you comfortable closing the books and having it all wrapped?
Well, I mean, I can have it, I can't have it probably that day because I have to.
But not till the 5th?
Definitely not till the 5th, because I won't be here.
Oh, okay.
The holiday. I mean, we're all gone. Monday's the 4th, so no one's here on the 4th.
The 6th at the earliest.
So the 1st is Friday.
Yeah.
And it definitely wouldn't be that day, even if I did work on Friday.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
The next meeting, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, we could do it anytime comfortably, knowing that I'm not rushing and try and capture all the stuff. I could probably have numbers for you by the 7th.
Yeah.
Well, and that's the thing. I don't even think, if we're not going to have the, if you're not going to hold the meeting until the 18th, it could even be the week of, you know, for anywhere from the 8th to the 13th, while the 12th.
Yeah.
Has to be the 12th, through 12.
First and then.
Yeah. Because then we have to get to pack it out.
Wait, the 19th? No, 18th.
18th.
18th is our meeting.
What about that Monday?
Next council.
Right.
Monday, the 11th?
Yeah.
Okay, so who is your two people? Or can you guys pick from who would volunteer?
I'm telling her on my phone.
I could do if it was after the 10th.
So if it's the 11th, you could participate? Anyone else itching to participate?
It is.
I'm going out of town that weekend, so.
Are you available the 11th?
Part time, though.
So will you guys make some sort of consensus of who your reps are, just for the record? You're out.
Don't we have review that night?
Glad you're on it, Sharice. We probably.
11th?
We do.
What's on the 11th?
Quarterly review.
Yeah.
Well, we could do an afternoon meeting. I mean, it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, and Sam just needed.
I could do anytime.
He just needed a heads up.
He needs a heads up so he can, if he needed a shift schedule or whatever, also give him enough time to do that.
We could do like a 4 to 6 meeting, and then that's usually at 6:30, the review.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, like, you wouldn't want to do it at 5:00 and then. Well, no. Itching on that, yeah, that's what I'm saying. So the 11th at 4, Dale and Sharice
will be your people. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
You guys all right?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Send Sam an email on that.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I have it queued up on my thing with everybody. I was just waiting. It has their names on it and none of your names, because I was trying to figure out who you guys were.
I'll be here.
I'll be right here.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
Any other question for the CA? Okay, well, thank you, Joseph.
Sure.
Items from the mayor or counselors? Any other items?
I have one.
Okay.
Counselor Norman.
It looks like Shea Lane has turned into a mobile repair shop.
Adams?
Are you talking about the tent trailer?
No.
Oh. I haven't been down there.
They had a pop-up tent and a table in front of it, and it looked like they did a head job in the middle of Shea Lane right next to Ron Dodger's.
Oh, Shady Lane.
Shady Lane.
Oh, I thought you meant Shea. I was.
Shady Lane.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, yikes, okay.
And they're usually parking their equipment where Ron Dodger's too, and it's kind of a tight corner.
Okay.
Being right up here?
Yeah.
Oh.
I mean, they can park in front of the inn on the other side. That's all rock, but it's all grass right now because nobody's parked on it. But, you know, there's a suburban there. It looks like he did a head job, and he's still got a sunshade tent up and a table and parts laying on the table and.
In the street.
In the street.
Yeah. Okay.
It's been going on for a week.
Yikes.
Yeah.
Kind of bit the final straw with me.
I noticed just the way the equipment was parked around there.
It was an accident. I waited half.
Halfway out in the street around there.
Okay.
They've taken Ron Dodger's special spot.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, anybody else?
Is it possible about getting a walk-through on Louisiana and maybe not Street, so the rest of our counselors were more understanding what's going on since, like Sharice is off, out of school now, maybe on a Friday, because it sounds like JR is off on Fridays.
Okay. And you just want to do a walk with what we're proposing? Okay, and you just want to do a walk with what we're propo, what we proposed with, to do with?
Yeah, and all of us kind of get an idea of what's going on, if that's possible. I mean, I mean, we're not making no decisions. We just want some finger pointing that we plan, hoping the street will go here and we've got to remove this and.
Okay.
It's kind of walking through and getting a lot better a visual instead of looking on a map or somebody telling us.
Okay, so do you guys want to peruse dates and then?
Let us know Fridays in July that work?
Yeah, you just have to let us know, because we can notice it and I can be available.
And I'll be there to babysit. Just not July 1st.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind walking up there again.
Do the eighth. The rest should be fine.
Can't do the eighth.
29th would be better not to do. My husband's turning.
29th?
In June?
July.
Oh, July.
Well, 15th or 22nd.
So.
Be best for me.
I.
Probably won't be here that day.
Which day?
29th of July.
Oh, yeah. I'm not here on the 22nd because I'm doing orientation with my kid at OSU.
We have a date.
15th?
15th.
15th? Tentatively, yeah.
Yeah.
Works for me.
Okay, so.
10?
11.
What time?
10.
10.
Are we calling this?
Work for you, Don?
What are we calling this?
Council Walkabout?
Review Louisiana Avenue, Not Street. I'll notice.
Louisiana.
Council Walkabout, field trip, yeah.
So we'll just.
Okay.
Meeting.
Okay, field trip, Louisiana, Not Street, field trip.
So many things, alright. July 15th?
Yeah. 10 a.m.
10 a.m. Oh, not 10 p.m.
And then where would you like to meet? Up at the top of Louisiana? Or go down Louisiana till we hit no more houses and then do the walk, because that's the area.
Park where necessary, because there won't be parking at the very end.
Yeah.
Park where you can.
Yeah.
Walk towards the group?
Sounds like a plan. Okay.
Wait, so we're meeting up the part of Louisiana?
Off Mellinger. That's how you're going to get in there, yeah?
Thank you. I've only been up there like twice ever.
Okay.
Good, Don. Yeah, I think that will help all of us.
Yeah, it's been a while since I've been up there.
The first time I went up there, it was an accident. And I was like, what is this?
What is this, a town?
Secret.
Okay, anybody else have any items?
Yeah, or discuss. So you were talking about the grand opening down at the lake with, with the ice cream shop.
Yeah.
So it's my understanding the gazebo that was built down there actually is the city's. That donated to the city.
Wow.
So I think that needs to be recognized. Pretty good contributions.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did a really nice job.
And, um, yeah, I wasn't aware of that. Talked to me one day and goes, well, you know, this is actually the city's, okay, we're paying for it, but it's the city's. Oh, I did not know that. So, but I mentioned that.
Thank you, Dale.
I've been sitting on this county or what they call it, kind of like a water resources committee at Margaret McReeder. That's the one, that's the one you pitched me on there, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, so anyhow, it looks like we're maybe going to have something come out of it. Talked to Josette here just this last week and one of, one of the concerns, and it isn't just for Nonya, it's, I mean, this is a countywide effort, but you end up understanding that you're basically in watersheds, you're working in watersheds. So the Nalam watershed, Tony Hyde's on the committee too. We were both, you know, they asked me, what are your concerns? Well, our concern was, was flooding. And then, and then everybody's concern is having enough water resources into the future. A little bit of some side issues around, I brought up around the wells around town that you know, availability and, and condition. But so anyhow, one of the, one of the big hurdles we run into and especially with new people moving into the valley that aren't familiar with the flooding is one, where to find information, what are the resources? And two is, when there's a flood level that's forecast, well, what does this mean for me? And I go on my own personal weather page, I tell people, uh, this is what the crest is. That's your number, you know, mark it down like on your property. So anyhow, I happen to come in and talk to Ben. I go, because he's really a guru on making these, you know, and I've worked with him on the sidewalks and the streets and the mapping and, you know, he sets it up so I can go in there and enter data, you know, do this stuff. And so I was like, how hard would it be to just go down the river valley? I don't know if we're going to put the tax law info in there or what, but for people can find themselves, but. So people could go in there and find their house and go, okay, in 2007, I know there was 10 inches of water in my house. You drop a pin on your house and there's a place you can put this information in. Or it was, you know, 2015, it was in my pasture and drop a pin to where it stopped. We could basically start to immortalize these points on a map, so it doesn't matter who, who owns or, you know, the ownership, those, those marks will be there. And so when there's a number spit out, they know, oh, now they have a reference to go by. So I asked Ben, how hard would this be to do? And, and he was all over it, of course. And so I said something back to these, it, it's a consulting firm that's running all this and they were actually quite excited about it. And Ben and I and one of the consultants had a virtual meeting there last week and, and, uh, and I think once she seen what Ben's capabilities were, she was really excited. She, she's a hydrologist by trade and does some GIS work and. Anyhow, so, and I talked to the city administrator before we got too far down the road here to make sure that it's okay that the city's involved in this and probably be on our server to start with. Anyhow, we'll see if the county wants to be involved there. Uh, or if it's going to have, you know, this might spin off. The one consultant said that they've never had anybody propose doing something like this before. So they're doing it in every county in Oregon, it sounds like. So, and then of course Ben's got some really great ideas of, you know, there'd be a page you can go to and it'll have the different pages of different resources, you know, if you want the, the weather data, the stream gauge and all this is here. If you want the, the FEMA, you know, page, you know, I can't remember all the different entities through, you know, if you have concerns, you might, you know, like if you want to build something, well, you need to make sure you're in the FEMA map.
Yeah, you can, you can print out your food map, yeah.
So anyhow, there'll be different pages on there. I mean, he's already got a framework built. So it'll, we'll see where it goes. There'll be a lot of, my, I'll probably be writing some of the narratives and some of the stuff and then the point data probably is going to, we're out to make sure we're ground truth in that, so like in the vision, that, that would be a role that.
Well, and we got, one potential is we have start point data from KLS.
Yeah.
Because they did high watermark surveying and they high watermark survey every elevation of a house in the floodplain. So they have a lot of data that I think we could add to the page.
Yeah, hopefully we can access that.
I think, Don, would be, I think it would, you know, they're still going to have to go to him to get an elevation cert. They're not going to be able to do that using the data, so, yeah.
And that was another source, if anybody's had an elevation certificate, that they do have that data that they can, the base flood elevation data for their property for that, so.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
I, I could pinpoint the, the flood.
Yeah.
I could tell you exactly how high the water got.
Yeah, and, and you know, that would be good data. I mean.
You too, Don. The more we get people to drop pins on this map and not just, just not the big flood, you know, like 2015, the people affected by that. We had pins on the map there for that. Now we know what 14-6 looks like.
Right.
You know, it, I mean, that's the biggest problem. I can't tell people.
Right.
I don't, can't tell you what your number is at all, because I don't live there. I don't, I don't know. I mean, I know maybe up here, and even up here is a little vague at the different footages. I mean, we have USGS guidance.
Yeah.
Rough guidance. I mean, it needs to be, I mean, I think 2015 showed that their number, their 15 foot's just off a little bit, or a little bit. I mean, when we're closing the highways down, when you can't get out of town, that's, to me, is a major flood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. Well, I, I, I would really appreciate that data, because when you get to a certain river heights, you know, it'd be, you begin to plan ahead, okay, now what am I going to? I'm going to really watch it here. Do I need to start moving stuff or get my animals out or my horse out or my?
Right.
My vehicles out and so all that stuff's very valuable.
Yeah, and imagine if you didn't know that number.
Yeah.
But you know it, Rick, you know?
Oh.
Yeah.
47 closed in 2015?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
In town?
Yeah.
Right out here. Well, and the, the ODOT bridge by just.
Storage.
The creek right there, that, that creek just overran the whole thing.
No issues that way, no?
Oh, yeah. It's worse.
It's worse here.
In town?
I couldn't get, no, not a way to miss.
Okay.
It was mostly bad outside of town. That's where the biggest, timber was horrible.
Yeah.
State, oh, town, state is terrible, missed.
The places in town that got it were the ones along Adams, just water around them, because they're all elevated, but behind Mini Mart, all those houses, those low, low lying houses were the ones, the four that got water there.
It was the, almost the opposite of 2007 for, for no good.
Yeah.
That didn't happen so. It happened so fast in 2007. It was just unbelievably fast.
Yeah.
Because I was down here in the realty office at 10 a.m. talking to Daryl and water was just coming over, Bear Creek was just coming over Maple. And I'll never forget, Daryl said, I'm glad there's not two feet of snow up in Green Mountain. Didn't matter. By 4:00, 4:30, the, the substation was full of water. And it was over the road at Riverview, over the bridge.
Yeah.
One other thing that came out of this, Ben and I had had a brainstorm session there a little bit, trying to fit the pieces. And we noticed this last year that our gauge wasn't predicting very good, very far in, in advance. I mean, the last event, they didn't even give a prediction. It was like, it's kind of late.
It's frustrating.
So we sent the webmaster a question and so we started getting replies. The one guy is from Noah. And, uh, and I know he CC'd one of the, one of the service guys out of Portland on it. He hasn't answered yet, but what we found out was we were wanting to know what triggers that station to start forecasting. And they said, well, they said it's actually tied to the Wilson River gauge. And we're like, wow, how does that work? Two different, no, Wilson River. And I mean, that's usually how the storms are lined up on that, but, but they said that, they said we already had a request put in to update that gauge that it will, um, it's going to have its own flood modeling now. They said it's already been done. They're monitoring it now, watching, of course, they're not going to see a lot in the summertime. But so next, hopefully this next winter, we'll, we'll have, uh, we'll be running our own watershed model. So we'll see how that works and it should start giving us some more prediction out ahead of time, because if you look at the Wilson gauge, I mean, there's times it actually shows out five days ahead. You know, if they, if they knows it's going to get some precip, you'll see a bump in the gauge reading in the prediction, so. I mean, if we can get a couple of days out ahead, would be a big benefit. And I can get out of the river prediction business.
You'll never get out.
No, keep doing, keep it up, Dale.
You'll have to come back out of retirement.
Yeah. Hey, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you, Dale.
You only get to go out of business when they become more accurate than you.
Yeah, I wanted to put me out of business.
That's the point.
Can exist, doesn't.
You have one more, Rick.
Yeah, go ahead.
I did notice we got our fencing and gate down between the Blue House and the seniors and that looks good. I get my, make sure that we don't miss that.
Yeah.
I agree.
Very nice.
So and he installed it.
He made it and installed it.
Made and installed, we paid for it.
Yeah, because it's on our property.
Yeah, yeah, no, I remember that conversation. Wow.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
And he is building gates and stuff like that.
Oh, for sure?
Yes.
Yeah. I told him, hey, cut up a little.
Put a little sign, maybe.
I mean.
Game, isn't it?
Yeah, I hate it.
Hey, anything else? Well, action item summary.
Okay, so staff's going to call Roger and then call Cannon Beach and some others. Steph will hit her list of city recorders to see if anyone else dealt with the rabbit problem. How they go. Um, July 11th, we're going to, if the two can make it, schedule the rate review meeting for 4 o'clock. Put in the numbers and take a couple looks at it and be good. Then they'll, that committee will make a recommendation to council for the 18th on what the new rate should be. It will also be accompanied by a resolution that we put together, updating the masterpiece schedule. Meet up with Stacy for intercultural society and amend OLCC permit map to fit the council's requirements. Check into the code violation on Shady Lane. And then July 15th at 10 a.m., we're going to have the council walkabout for Louisiana, Not Street. Don't forget anything.
So were we going to inquire with our police on the review on that 911 call?
Yeah, so.
It was non-emergent.
Yeah, it was non-emergency. Um, we, we already have a list of ones that the county did not call back. And so that's what we're taking to our meeting with Pixie, like as these are, this is not, you don't have to come here.
Yeah.
If the situation's solved or it's not imminent, but you, we request and require someone to call them back.
Have we had any complaints on emergency calls?
No, because they come.
They do.
The pri, the priority, they have a priority level. And if it's, you know, someone came and harassed, but the kids got on the bus and went to school, so the situation's kind of down, downgraded, and so it didn't come in as the priority that.
They probably assumed that had escalated to that, she would call emergency, but it doesn't mean you don't.
Well, and that's just the risky part, why I think we need to get our own set of people back here. Fill up our own set of people and not rely on the county as much. Seems like it's not really working out for us as well. not rely on the county as much. Seems like it's not really working out for us as well. Chief and I have talked about this. Um, a lot of times we have them coming on in double duty. So Dave will be on, their guy will be on, and we're like, okay, we only have you for 20 hours. We need it to be when we have no, not when Dave needs a buddy. That's not helpful to us. So, um, that's one of the things we are bringing up. And we have a list of the calls that our intent in the agreement was that those would be responded to even with a phone call. And we have a list that, of ones that didn't happen.
When are we going to meet with sheriff?
Um, chief's scheduling that. I just talked to chief this afternoon and he's scheduling it.
Okay.
And then Sean is kind of taking over the jamboree prep because it's kind of unknown based on chief's appointments when he'll be back to us. So he's doing all the prep for that communicating with other agencies and for helping us during jamboree.
But back to her phone call.
Yeah.
Thought there was kind of a question around professionalism.
Oh, no, I have all the notes. Dispatch just said hello to her and the bus driver.
Okay.
I have all of it. I'm gonna, I just wasn't reiterating the whole story.
Okay.
We have some issues.
And I don't know quite what, whose roles was, I would assume that really the chief is probably the one that would, I want to listen to those and then he would, I mean, who's, he, there's a chain of command into that.
Yeah, so we basically, chief will listen to those calls.
Yeah.
Then he'll, we'll relay that to the sheriff. And if the sheriff doesn't listen or doesn't act on that, then we go to the county commissioners because, you know, you just-
But I mean, as far as the rudeness of the operator, then it would be that whoever's managing the 911 center.
Right, but that would be under the sheriff.
Okay.
County.
Yeah, so it's kind of like, we go to their steps and then their hierarchy goes down to it. And if they don't do it, we just keep going up till we get answer.
Right.
Change.
Is there under the sheriff? I thought they were standalone.
Well, Clemmie County 911 is standalone as an agency, but in the collaboration working, we would take it first to him.
Right.
Right? He may say, I would like you to also share it with so-and-so that is the head of that, or may share it on our behalf, right? So I'd, chief will have to listen to the calls and see, because I've called 911 before and sometimes your emotion-
Yeah.
You, you feel like it's this and they're this and sometimes it's not when you listen to it again.
And it's clear, tell me that I'm helping help you. Hello? So right, it's sort of slow.
Yeah, so we just got to listen and see what really happened. I don't doubt.
Yeah.
I mean, you can tell if someone's giving you the brush off.
Yeah.
Not being-
I mean, I don't think it's, it's not every day somebody come in complaining about it, so I'm not-
Unfortunately-
This work, it probably doesn't happen very often. I just wanted to make sure we kind of-
Unfortunately, Clemmie County 911's had a lot of issues like that.
Okay.
And while the sheriff's office might have, or they might have categorized it as a non-emergency, it was very much an emergency for-
Yeah.
Yes, and I'm surprised some sort of restraining order isn't a higher priority because that to me seems, that's the perfect thing to escalate. It's not like suspicious person, but I don't see anybody. Or my kid's bike got stolen, but I can't see it.
Yeah.
Restraining order involving children, that's-
Yeah, that seems like it should bump up there. And it may be that that's one that we didn't know. They didn't call back until Victoria said it. There's some that we see them when the guys come in and they're just sitting there in the CAD, not answered. And they are low priority. One was like a suspicious person and one was something else, but it wasn't something they would have traveled here for.
Right.
But at least in courtesy call, we've heard you, when an officer comes on on Tuesday, it'll be on his list or whatever.
Okay. Thank you all for your participation and I will adjourn the meeting at 8:55. Meeting adjourned.